Talking to me?
Hi, Winona. I'd like to take this time to ask Gabriel Pena to come up and do the pledge of allegiance with us. He is our student representative and this is his last night and we're very proud to have him on our board.
I will introduce you to the flag of the United States of America. In a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you.
I'd like to just remind everybody that today is actually Flag Day. That's a great participation.
Accepting championship.
So let's do roll call. Cheryl, please.
Mr. Tatius?
Here.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Espinola?
Here.
For this time, I would like to give Mr. Gabriel Pena a certificate of participation awarded to him in honor of your commitment to leading the change as an active student representative of the Great Little School Committee at Great Little Technical High School. We very much appreciated your help all year with keeping us in tune with what was going on and I'd like to present this to you. Congratulations, Gabe.
Congratulations.
On that and all your personal accomplishments. Mr. Moran, we have any public appearances?
It appears not.
Any school committee communications? Report of the student representative, which we are sad to say this will be your last report.
Yes, thank you very much. Organized for organizations and clubs, National Technical Honor Society members assisted with carrying shop signs at graduation. Members also held an election to determine their officials for next year. The following students were elected. Zachary Grenier, president, and Angelina Chin, vice president. Skills USA had a very close online election for next year's executive council. The students were elected as officials. Gregory Herbert, Karen Vannu, Eric Rizardo, Navi Guzman, Nikela Rodriguez, Akira Lopez. The students that were not elected are invited to take a leadership role in Skills USA. The next meeting will be held on Thursday, June 14th, 2018, from 2:00 to 2:55 in room 3447. Dance club has started working on their routine for next year's pep rally. As for our athletics, Griffin softball had a successful season and remained in contention for MIAA tournament play until the final week of the season. The program also fielded their first ever freshman level team, which should only serve to further strengthen the program for years to come. Both boys and girls were cross-fielded competitive teams that showed great strides as the year progressed. Each program will look to build off their late-season success as they look to the future. The track and field team had many team and individual successes during the dual-meet season, as well as postseason and invitational events. Griffin tennis captured an impressive fourth-straight CAC league championship this spring. The team's league record over that span has been a remarkable 46 wins against and against two just losses. Boys volleyball once again captured the CAC season championship with a final record of 16-4. The team qualified for the state vocational tournament, advancing to the finals before ultimately dropping a hard-fought game to Great New Bedford. The team also earned a spot in the MIAA state tournament. Last year, the baseball team once again was one of the stronger programs in the CACs, finishing with a final regular-season record of 14-4. The Griffin nine also qualified for the state vocational and MIAA tournaments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Come back and visit sometime.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
All right. With your college degree.
Definitely. Oh, yeah, you're already now.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gabe.
You can take that, yes.
On behalf of the committee.
Yes, wait, 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 you gotta go.
All right, all right, ready?
Thank you.
Hope I did that right. With your permission, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Report of the treasurer, approval warrants. Oh, approval minutes, sorry. Approval merits for the May 10th meeting. First by Mr. Moran, second by Mr. Booton.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Report of the treasurer, approval of the warrants.
Second.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Motion to approve the expenditures for the sum of $4,718,576.11.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda would be a report of the general counsel. We need three motions to move to executive session. So we're gonna move, take this and move it out of place? All right. Report of the superintendent director, student recognition, awarding of perfect attendance certificates. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, item number one is student recognition. I'd like to recognize Thalia Arizari for her outstanding attendance in the four years here at our school. Pretty impressive to be able to not miss a day in our school. She's an outstanding student, outstanding person. I'd like her to come up and have the chairman present her an award. Perfect attendance from 2014 to 2018, Thalia Arizari. Congratulations. Good job. You never sick?
Well, I guess I thought I still. Congrats. Thank you.
Number two on the agenda is the monthly cooperative education report. Currently, we have 96 juniors participate in cooperative education, represents 19% of our junior class. Report is enclosed a little bit higher, obviously, than last year. If you look at the comparisons, I know it's something we want to see on a monthly basis. Next item on the agenda is a response to a recent request from Mr. Booton in regards to the admissions report. A bunch of different data there, multiple pages that were included for your review.
Can I just, Mr. Chairman? Can I say something? I just wanted to say thank you for the report, very thorough. I appreciate the supplement, too. We've been getting a lot of questions, I think, that my colleagues in Lowell, as to what's happening there with their high school, as to where we're trending. So I appreciate all the work that went into this and I think we can squelch a little bit of the rumors that were going around that are untrue and unfounded and some of them that actually show here for the increase. So thank you for taking care of this. It's gonna help us answer a lot of questions.
Thank you.
And Ms. Martinez for all her hard work.
Number four on the agenda, at the last meeting, I had mentioned to the committee that I was gonna include a list of some of the summer projects that we're gonna be doing in terms of our building and trying to invest and protect our investment. You see a list there from Mark Byrne included as a memo. This is a representative of what we're doing in the district over the next 60 to 70 days, up to the first day of school in August. Item number five, six, seven, eight, nine, I'd like to turn over to our assistant superintendent-principal Jill Davis. Before she comes up, I want to thank her, her staff, the leadership team for their hard work in terms of organizing this and putting this together. It's a lot of hard work, a lot of committee members. I'd also like to thank the teachers who have sat on these committees and spent a numerous amount of time with shared decision-making in terms of coming up, in terms of our school improvement plan. I have to say, I've been in the business many years, this is one of the better school improvement plans that I've seen. I'm really proud of our school. Ms. Davis. Yeah, it stepped out with that.
She went out with the parent.
You want to do the report of the business manager, you want to go out of order? It's up to you. We'll be doing the report of the business manager now?
Yeah.
The only thing on my agenda tonight is to get a payment for the transfers of $272,000.
You have a question, Mr.?
No, just, uh.
Okay, so, no, no, that was Paul, this is George. So it's, it's. It's a motion by Paul, seconded by George.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Thank you. Did you pick Mr. Chairman?
Welcome, Ms. Davis, and before we move any further, I know I could speak on behalf of the board here. Thank you to you, Mr. Superintendent, and Ms. Davis, for your hard work and all your dedication to making that graduation a success. And we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well said.
So I have many policies to move forward tonight, looking for your approval. So I think I'm gonna ask Mr. White to come up first and start with the athletic handbook and the concussion policy. He just wants to sit here. So basically, for the athletic handbook, there is minimal changes. One of the biggest, one of the bigger changes is our ice hockey co-op, which is now with Nishoba Tech. So that's documented. Also, there's a change of where the link to register can be found, and that's the only change in the athletic handbook. Any questions?
Mr. Booton?
Question, I guess about the hockey.
Yep.
How did it go? Are we gonna be invited back next year?
We're gonna be back with them next year and everyone seemed pretty happy. We had a good turnout and worked pretty well.
Very good.
I'll ask something about that. Is this on an annual basis or is this for the long term?
Yeah, it is annual renewals. We already put in the renewal for next year. And we'll analyze it, you know, on a year-by-year basis in terms of what, how it looks and how we did and if we want to keep going with it or.
Who's the sponsor of this? Is, are we joining with Nishoba, they joining with us? Like, who we have to ask?
Nishoba's the host school, yep, and we're the.
They're the host school?
Yep, because they already had a program established, so we joined in with their program.
Okay. Motion to approve the student handbook? Motion approved by Mr. Bahu. The athletic handbook? Seconded by Mr. Booton.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
The next policy is the head injuries and concussion in extracurricular activities. There is no change in this policy with the exception of the date.
Motion approved?
Approved by Mr. Booton, seconded by Mr. Tatius.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White. The next policy is the 2018 medical emergency response plan. I'm going with the small to the big. Thank you. So I think some of the changes that are notable in this policy is the increase of the number of fixed defibrillators in the building from six to eight. There's one now in the cafeteria and one in the preschool program. I think that's important to note, as well as the athletic coaches who were trained to use the defibrillators. There's now 22 fall coaches, 19 winter coaches, and 33 spring coaches that are able to use their defibrillators. Another big change was the updated floor maps to reflect the changes since the building renovation. And that's basically the changes in the medical emergency response plan.
Move to approve. Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Giggy.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
So next, I'm gonna go with the student handbook. So there have been several changes to the student handbook. What I'd like to do is just highlight what I think to be major changes and then take any questions that you have in regards to any of the changes to the handbooks. So the first major change is a change in the wording to the notice of non-discrimination, and that's adding veteran status, genetic information, and pregnancy. Oh, I'm sorry. That's on page two, number five.
Now, were we asking that before?
No, we were not.
Are we now asking it?
Yes, in the non-discrimination policy we're adding.
Okay.
Another major change is to number 15, on page four. The competency reporting system is now electronic, so we no longer have to print out the copies. Students have access through the program and parents will have access electronically. We will email them a link so that they can view the competencies online. Upon request, they can ask for a paper copy, however, everything is electronic now. On page five, number 19, just in addition to clarify, the selling of food by students is not allowed either for profit or for nonprofit.
I heard of such things happening here.
So we are.
We took a lot of the vending machines out.
We are prohibiting the students to selling food. Another change to page six, number 20, is that 21? Changes to search and seizure to include cell phones when necessary. That's within the paragraph, towards the end of the paragraph, maybe one, two, three sentences. It says including cell phones.
I'm assuming that's been checked with our console?
With the school, yes.
Okay.
Page eight, we're now clearly outlining our ALICE protocols. Any questions?
Could you say that again, please?
Clearly outlining our ALICE protocols. So it used to be called soft lockdown and hard lockdown. Now we have a soft lockdown and ALICE protocols.
Okay, so we're following the ALICE protocol now?
Yes, we are. We have been. But it wasn't clearly outlined in the handbook. Now we're clearly outlining the protocol and the acronym and being clear on the expectation.
Thank you.
Page number nine, number 30, the addition of the school lunch program. Just really explaining our school lunch program and how parents can sign on to MySchoolBucks to set up the account and also to be clear and to limit the amount of overdue balances that if a student begins to increase in a balance for their lunch, they won't be denied a lunch, but their choices will be limited.
That's pretty much a federal protocol right now.
Yes.
They just changed it, yeah?
But I think to have some information in the handbook about the MySchoolBucks is important for parents.
Good job.
And then, page 11, number 37. We have the National Technical Honor Society. Next year, that will be in combination with the National Honor Society, so we're adding that organization to us, to our organizations as well.
So, Ms. Davis, would that be two?
Yes.
Separate distinct honors for the kids?
Yes, two separate honors, National Honor Society and National Technical Honor Society.
I know you're just breezed by that, but that is fantastic.
Yeah, that's great. The students are very happy about it as well.
I think it's fantastic.
Well, I highlighted it. Number 13, the parent portal is now the Aspen family portal. It's just a word change, but I think that's important. Those were my big highlights. Also, I'm gonna hand this out to you now, because there were some minor word changes that occurred after this was sent out to all of you, so I just want to clarify some of those. I'll wait till you all get. So these changes were discussed with the teachers' union and an agreement between myself, Mr. Costa, and some of the teachers that this would help to improve some of our, the first one is tardy to class. It used to just say tardy to class, so now it's tardy to class slash homeroom. And three tardies to class homeroom per quarter may result in progressive discipline. This is something that has not changed, it just was never documented, so now we're actually putting it in writing. It will, it's going into the book now. This is a revision that we discussed. Yes. Also, just to highlight the not visible under the cellphone policy, I just put an underline underneath that, that cell phones should not be visible in the classroom, shops, and hallways. And something that occurred this year that I think needs to be noted in the handbook is the charging of cell phones in classrooms and shops is also prohibited. That they can charge their cell phones at lunchtime, there's charging stations in the cafeteria if they need to. There's no need to do it in the classroom or in the shop area, specifically when we don't want cell phones visible during the learning time. And then just to clarify for teacher detention, it's just a clarification of what we meant by academic issues, and those are issues evolving from non-compliance in the classroom. For example, repeatedly not completing the work. That was just a clarification that we wanted to make. And those were the only three additional changes that you are not sent in your packet that I think are important.
Mr. Davis, we're gonna have to push this off because you got this thing late to us. Mr. Booton?
I'm sorry.
She has a question for Ms. Davis.
I do. So the cell phones, I'm not sure if there's, I think I read last year, it's okay with the teacher's permission. I know sometimes in electrical or plumbing they may.
We're asking that cell phones not be visible in all classroom shops and hallways, media centers, gymnasiums. We were very clear, it's.
So.
Followed that directive this year.
It's not, I thought last year it was allowed if they were looking up something on their cellphone.
It should not. We have Chromebooks and several Chromebook cards in this building that if students need to access information from the internet or something electronically, they could use their Chromebooks.
So the instructors are not having their kids look something?
They are not.
Okay. It's a change from a few years ago, all right. I had a couple of items that I wanted to ask about. Page three on the change sheet, number seven. Unexcused absences per quarter, students who receive no credit for the quarter due to attendance will be considered ineligible to athletics and participation in the cooperative education program. Is that too punitive from the same thought that if a student isn't doing their homework or isn't doing their classwork, turning it in on time, you don't take them out of the classroom and send them down to discipline because you're taking more time away from class? Co-op is the outside classroom for them, so is, I'm just wondering if that is a little bit too harsh? Have you had situations where you've regretted?
They do have the opportunity to appeal to me.
And if there's extenuating circumstances, it's not something they do all the time? Okay, I didn't, the appeal part, that would be good.
It's under the co-op policy, there is an appeal. And the process does work well.
And then in the actual student handbook on page 11, under excused absences? Last year, the wording was changed to not allow doctors' visits and only emergency visits were allowed. I'm gonna make a motion to change the handbook to eliminate the word emergency in the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line down for doctor's visits. It's not the school's reas, the school shouldn't have the responsibility to decide whether something's an emergency visit or not. The students shouldn't have to come in and explain why they went to the doctor. I understand if they go to a routine visit at nine o'clock in the morning and they don't come back for the rest of the day, that can be problematic, but if they have a note from a doctor, hopefully the doctor says can return to school, then I would assume it'd be unexcused. But if they just give a note and a student had to go to the doctors and they went for testing and it was something serious, I don't, I don't think it's right that the student would have to explain what that situation is to someone. So I would like to have emergency removed.
And I can agree with that.
Okay.
So I would just like to interject some things there that might get a little bit touchy back and forth because you get HIPAA things and whatever. So if we are to just excuse everybody for having an absence or whatever, we're not gonna be able to.
Only with a doctor's note.
Yeah, so if they have a doctor's note, I'm okay with that, that's fine, but I don't think we should totally, like, emergency stuff like that because there is an attendance policy and we need to hold it, and there's a state law that requires attendance. So we have to be diligent on our attendance because we could be negligent on some kids if we don't follow up. So as long as that is a policy that we have a note, I'm okay with that because you run it to HIPAA, too.
And that, that's the issue that we had last year and doing more research on it. By saying only emergency doctor's visits, you then need to have the student explain to the school or have the doctor write a note to what the actual emergency was. My point is, the school shouldn't be asking what, why you went to the doctor. If you went to the doctor and you have a doctor's note, it should be an excused absence. I don't think the doctor should be writing anything on there that you went there for mental health, you went there for anything. So taking emergency out of it would keep us in compliance with HIPAA, take burden off the school, and it wouldn't be undue intrusion to a student's medical history.
Mr. Giggy?
Well, that kind of, we might have a conflict in the sentence above says, for that reason, all non- "For that reason, all nonessential appointments, dentist, orthodontic appointments, eye exams, routine doctor visits." So what's gonna happen now is the routine, routine doctor visits now fall under this category of being excused. And what we're trying to do is to have all nonessential visits be done on the, uh, personal time of the student and not on the school time. So now you're saying you can go to the doctor, just show, show us a note, and they'll get a note. And now it's an excused visit and they're using regular routine visits and getting an excused absence.
I understand that. But who, you're putting a burden on our people down in the attendance office to decide what's essential and what's nonessential? If I have psoriasis, is that acceptable to you? Would it be acceptable to the next person? And why do I have to tell you that I have psoriasis? You're opening a can of worms by requiring to know what that doctor's visit was about. I don't think we have the right to ask. I think it puts a burden on us because then what do we do with that information? We have to follow HIPAA and file it somewhere? If they... What Ms. Davis and I talked about earlier was having the doctor's note that says child can return to school that day. And if the child doesn't come back to school, then it's an unexcused absence because they were, they were out for the doctor's visit and they can return. If the doctor's note just says it's an... They were seen by the doctor. I think that covers them.
I just see, uh, an opportunity for abuse. And maybe it can be defined under a different avenue. If there's more than three excused, then you need some sort of supporting documentation. I, I just think it opens it up for abuse. The way if you take emergency out of there, you're going to have people saying, "You know what? I can't do it on my personal time. It's gonna happen during school hours." And they're really taking advantage of the loophole.
Take the, take the other side, the person that's not trying to get away with something. A child has a real medical issue that they don't wanna discuss with an administrator. Why should they?
So they come in with a doctor's note?
What business is it there? They saw the doctor, the doctor wrote the note. If the child came back to school and it says they can return to school, then it should be excused. What if the child had to go for additional blood work because there may be something serious wrong? And they haven't come to grips with whatever that something wrong is?
I just think what you're gonna do is... I understand your concern about your privacy and so forth. At... If it's a really serious medical condition, I believe the school should be aware of the child's circumstances so that the nurse or whatever can deal with a truly an emergency. I don't think it's overburdensome on the doctor or on the patient or on the student's privacy to indicate that there's a real need for it. And I, and I don't see it as an abuse. I, what I'm seeing here is that anybody who doesn't wanna schedule it on their time, you're gonna get a doctor's note. And now it's become an excused absence. And you're gonna see orthodonture appointments, you're gonna see all kinds of things tossed in there. And I don't know if there's a way that you can limit that and remove the, the word emergency. I just think you're opening yourself for the slippery slope.
Ms. Davis, have we ended up... Has this changed from the last few years, this policy?
Yes, it has.
Have we had problems with it?
No, we have not. And I have some, uh, facts here. Our attendance is, in April was ninety-four point two-four percent, in May ninety-five point two-five percent, and in June ninety-five point eight-five percent to date. So our attendance is, uh, has...
The kids wanna be here.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that if, if there was a significant situation that came up, they would see somebody and somebody would deal with it accordingly. Being, and like Mr. Giggie said, we would want those people to let us know so that we can help them in any way that we can to facilitate their completing the school year. Mr. Davis?
Uh, have we relied on notes in the past? Or do we request them or was it on a case-by-case basis?
No, we, we, we do request them if they're out.
And what kind of note do we generally get back?
If we get a doctor's note back, it's excused.
So if the student comes in the, in the... Comes into school in the afternoon, he's not here, she's not here due to a, uh, doctor's appointment in the morning, is it incumbent upon that student to bring a note from the doctor?
Yes, they usually bring a note from the doctor, yes.
To return to school?
Yes.
Is that by request of...
That's an excused absence, yes.
I'm just saying to follow the policy, take the word emergency out. Because anytime you go to the doctor and you come back to the school with a note, you're going to get it excused. But if you put emergency down, then you're requiring the discipline office, because they're the ones that dictate whether it's excused or unexcused, to decide whether or not that appointment was, um, an emergency. And who are they with? They don't have the training to decide what's an emergency. And you have three different people down there. It'll be three different things. Taking out the word emergency just actually solidifies what our current policy is.
Do you know of some instances where emergency, that word emergency became some problems?
Not for this school, but others, yeah.
Mr. Tatsias?
To me, it's an emergency if it happened unexpectedly. But if you have, if you go to a doctor and you made an appointment to go to a doctor, it's not an emergency. So...
What if a child has type-two diabetes? Or they maybe have type-two or type-one and they have to go for s- testing?
It's an emergency.
They get a note?
You, would everybody consider it an emergency, is my point? Now you're, now the discipline office...
If you were waiting at the bus stop and you fell and broke your arm?
Of course, sure.
Something like that. But if you could've made an appointment outside of school hours, it's not an emergency.
And what if they can't? What if they could get an, what if they could get an appointment tomorrow at ten and the next appointment's not for three weeks?
So they give an appointment and they give them an excused absence? I, I think it's a non-brainer. Do we have a second?
Just looking to take a word out.
Do we have a second to take emergency out?
Well, can I ask one more question?
Sure. Mr. Mr. Giggie?
Do you think the word emergency is problematic?
As of this year, it has not been. But I understand the, the, the point that Mr. Booton is making. Uh, we do not deny students who bring in doctor's notes. That is an excused absence. That's, that's not the issue.
Okay, that's not the issue.
No.
There's no problem.
But by your own stats that you just gave us, it looks, it bodes very, pretty well for...
Well, I think it sets the expectation that we appreciate that if they needed to have appointments, that they do them outside of the school day 'cause we valuable all the time that they're here.
So at, at the present time, it's a non-issue, the word, 'cause that's what was in place last year?
Yes.
What, we have no second? So we'll move on? Next.
Okay. Those were my highlights for the student handbook. Does anyone else have any questions regarding the student handbook?
I mean, uh, what's your name again?
Mr. Park. Start the P, I can't close. I'm tired.
Just one question, um, Ms. Davis. Uh, as far as the competency reporting, you said it's all, it's going electronic unless a parent asks for it. And then if they do, you'll send them a hard copy?
We will going to send them through either an email or give them a link to access the, uh, the documents on X2.
Okay.
And if they want to request a copy, they can.
Okay. So let me ask this as a, um, as a parent. Concerned about my own children's welfare and such like that. Sometimes I, I don't go on the computer and look at the stuff that I need to because of my busy lifestyle and such. And, um, I ask the school for hard copies and they mail it to me. So my question becomes if, and it was, you know, personal to the, to myself, that if I ask the school once and they send me a hard copy regularly. So could I sort of have you put that, um, give the parent that sort of a benefit?
It doesn't say that in there?
Well, it doesn't say that, you know, if I ask once...
It was gonna say that in my request. In my Connect Ed call that would go home, letting them know it's coming out, they can check their email, I would say, "If you would like a hard copy, please feel free to contact me and we can mail you a hard copy."
Sure, and could this be on a regular basis? Is my question. Where they, do they have to call every January and every June and every January and every June? I'm just saying if they ask once...
So if they request once, sure. I can clarify with them if they're going to want that hard copy all the time. It's an extensive amount of paper.
It doesn't even have to be hard copy. It could be an email. But I'm just saying if they call up and they ask for it once...
We might give them access through an email and send it home to them.
Right, and then once they ask that one time, then it just becomes ongoing to them unless they say, "Hey, listen, I don't need that anymore." Would that be okay?
Yes.
Terrific, thank you.
Would you like me to add that to the handbook?
I don't think you have to.
Or in my, when I send out my Connect Ed to let them know?
That would be perfect.
I think it's actually better 'cause I don't know how many people actually read that handbook. So...
Thank you.
Can we approve this? Do the kids sign this? Do they, they have a thing that they sign? Say that I've read this?
Yes, there's actually a sign-off form that parents and students sign off, that they've signed off and agreed to what they have read in the handbook, specifically highlighting certain things that they should read.
Has anybody made a motion to approve the student handbook yet? I have a motion to approve the student handbook.
Second by Mr. O'Hare?
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
No.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Okay, next is the School Improvement Plan. So I just wanna start out by saying the School Improvement Plan is a collaborative plan that's developed with input from the school council, which is made up of parents, students, and community members, as well as the School Improvement Planning Team, which is made up of teachers and administrators. So I just wanna thank my student council members and my School Improvement Planning members for their hard work as we met throughout the school year to develop this document. So, uh, a lot of hard work goes into developing the document. One of the first things that we do is look at data. And as you know, early in the school year, you were presented with data in, in regards to our accountability and where we are as a school. So, uh, one of the first goals in the School Improvement Plan is to strengthen our knowledge and support services to improve our system of accountability for behavior. And that behavior would be for all members of the school community, uh, meaning words, needs, and actions. And some of the outcomes that we're looking for is to improve the school climate, uh, increase the level of student engagement, and reduce student anxiety and stress in order to improve engagement. Uh, as you can see there, there's many activities that we are going to do. Uh, one of the big focuses of next school year is to really put, focus on social, emotional learnings and providing professional development for teachers and staff on the understanding information and strategies uh, to help struggling learners and challenging, and students with challenging behaviors in the classroom. A lot of our students have social, emotional issues and have been subject to trauma in their lives. So I think it's important that, uh, teachers have the tools or the strategies to be able to work with this and their students in their classrooms. Uh, another big focus of this goal is to develop a clinical advisory team made up of, uh, our school adjustment counselors and our school psychologists to not only speak about students who we consider as our, our high-risk students, but help to, uh, support and advise teachers uh, in working with these students. Another big initiative as part of this goal is also to develop an electronic blue slip system. Uh, as you know, blue slips are written by any staff member for students who are, uh, not behaving according to the school code of conduct. And, uh, we've been using handwritten blue slips for years. And we are now moving to an electronic system with the hope that, uh, it improves communication both with the main office staff and with teachers in regards to students' behaviors and gives teachers more, uh, a quicker response time and feedback onto what happened with, with those students when they were down in the office. So we, we feel that would be important. The second goal in the School Improvement Plan is to improve the academic growth in ELA, math, and science for students with disabilities and struggling learners. As you know, based on the accountability presentation that was given in the beginning of the school year, that our students with disabilities and our struggling learners did not meet the targets that the state, uh, has set for us. So we're trying to close that gap. And we're really putting a big focus this year uh, on those students and to develop strategies and interventions to hopefully improve their achievement and close that gap. Some of the things that we're going to do, some of the, uh, important initiatives are, uh, we're piloting, uh, a language support and math intervention class with focuses, focused skills for those students who are at risk. We're implementing executive functioning curriculum in the study skills classes. Uh, executive functioning works on planning, organizing, time managing, management. Executive functioning works on planning, organizing, time management. And the whole curriculum for the study skills class is now going to be focused on executive functioning skills. The special education department is also creating a specific teams for 9th and 10th graders to have a more focused and collaborative approach to working with these students in need. We're gonna provide some professional development to all our staff in regards to motivating students and improving student engagement and differentiating instruction. Professional development to staff on executive functioning strategies. Those are just some of the highlights.
Good job.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Motion approved? Move.
Thank you. Again, I just wanna thank those two groups because they were instrumental.
Thank you for everything. It's a lot of work. Got a second?
For what?
Hey, George?
Yeah.
For the School Improvement Plan.
Well, those are my policies.
Ms. Tatsias?
Ms. Tatsias?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Giggie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hair?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Lemay?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Espinola?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. I just wanna thank you and I just wanna thank you again for all your support throughout this 2017-18 school year. So I appreciate working with all of you and hope we can continue to work together to better the students of Great Little Technical High School. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
All right, old business, anybody have anything that they wanna talk about that is on there already? Mr. Booton?
Can we remove number 8, please? Mr. O'Hair, do you wanna...
Mr. O'Hair, you got anything?
No.
You wanna remove the... About the Cool Harris one? Number 4.
No, I'm all set.
Do you wanna remove it from old business since it's done?
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
Thank you.
Any new business? Any committee person motions? Report of subcommittees, the June 5th, 8th, legal search subcommittee report.
Are you in charge of it or is Paul?
Paul is.
Paul is?
They've got you.
I think it's a typo. Paul can handle this.
He's very close.
The superintendent, not the superintendent, the illegal search for the attorneys, we met on two different occasions with three law firms and then another three. And as a result from that, we got it down to where we feel are comfortable with two firms. And as we, the subcommittee discussed earlier, we would like to further present this to the full board in review of those two law firms for a suggestion to choose one up for a vote at a special meeting in August.
So you wanna remove this tonight and then vote on it in August?
I'm just reporting.
Okay. So you don't wanna have a vote tonight, says vote?
No, we're not gonna have a vote tonight.
Okay, no votes, so we'll move it to the agenda for August.
And that's for both of those?
Okay.
Except the report is a report of progress.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll move that to the August agenda?
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you.
Report of the June 14th Finance Subcommittee Meeting.
We had a finance... That would be me. We had a finance subcommittee meeting tonight to review the 2018-2019 budget, to come up with our final numbers of what we feel the state's going to offer us for our finance of the school. And we spoke about some general thoughts and ideas to go ahead and create another health position here at the school, as well as to also add some security, as well as some technology for security. We took a vote and approved all of those things, and that's pretty much it. So I hope that the school committee could go ahead and take that vote and approve everything that we already approved.
Now, Mr. Bahu, the things that you spoke of were the things that we discussed tonight, the security and the health and things like that?
Yes.
All right.
Wanna make a motion?
Sure. Motion to approve the 2000... Today's June 14, 2018 Finance Subcommittee Meeting.
Motion by Mr. Booton, second, I mean Bahu, seconded by Mr. Booton. Roll call.
Ms. Tatsias?
Yes.
Ms. Giggie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hair?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Bahu?
Yes.
Ms. Lemay?
Yes.
Ms. Booton?
Yes.
Ms. Espinola?
Yes.
All right, so I need a motion to go into executive session for the General Counsel. First by Mr. Moran, second by Mr. O'Hair.
Update on litigation.
First is for litigation. Update on litigation. The first one. Mr. Booton, I mean, Mr. Moran, everybody's Mr. Booton tonight. Mr. Moran and Mr. O'Hair, seconded for executive session for update on litigation.
Ms. Tatsias?
Yes.
Ms. Giggie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hair?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
This is what you're gonna look like. Ms. Moran? Yes.
Ms. Bahu?
Yes.
Ms. Lemay?
Yes.
Ms. Booton?
Yes.
Ms. Espinola?
Yes. Update on grievances, motion to win executive session for that. Mr. Booton, Mr. Giggie.
Ms. Tatsias?
Yes.
Ms. Giggie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hair?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Bahu?
Yes.
Ms. Lemay?
Yes.
Ms. Booton?
Yes.
Ms. Espinola?
Yes. Ms. Long, we may be coming out of here with some votes tonight?
Mm-hmm.
I believe that should be the case with the chairman.
Okay, so stay tuned, we may come out of executive session with some votes. Motion for a short recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Recall the meeting back to order?
Ms. Tatsias?
Yes.
Ms. Giggie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hair?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Bahu?
Here.
Ms. Lemay?
Yes.
Ms. Booton?
Here.
Ms. Espinola?
Here.
Okay. Okay. Somebody has to make a motion, please.
Make a motion to accept contracts. Anybody got the numbers on it?
Contract for...
Here you go, George.
Human resources administrator, district treasurer.
He's got it, he's got it.
Just go according to the agenda. Just go according to the agenda.
Director of human resources, non-contractual employees, administrators, custodians, custodians, maintenance, and security. So somebody needs to make a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve all of those contracts, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Mr. Tatsias?
Okay.